August 8th meeting of the Des Moines City Council to order and I'll lead us in the pitch tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. Tony, is there any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. At this point in time is public comments. Okay. The comments are made from the podium and you would have three minutes. Nobody has signed up, but was there anybody who wished to speak tonight who had not signed up for one of the public hearings? Okay. Seeing none, Board and Committee report, starting with Carmen.
I would comment only that the farmer's market will be again a fantastic place to be on Saturday at, from 10 till 2:00. And this week is the kids fishing derby again with all of the materials provided on site if you want to bring your kids down to do some fishing. Thank you.
Wow, we're moving right along. I'll be brief. Recently I've been keeping an eye on what's been going on at the Artemis site and Tony's been very good about giving me reports on a daily basis and as you probably know, we've got graders up there and cranes and steel and all that kind of stuff, so it's finally doing its thing. And so I just want to comment that now that the EB5 regional center designation has been granted and the construction on the hotel has begun, I kind of take a different look at things. Now I'm having the occasion to reflect back on what it took to get there. Prior to that, all I could think about was when are we going to start breaking around? When are we going to start making things move? When are we going to get the EB5 designation? It will trigger the whole thing. But now it's, like I said, it's looking back and saying, okay, we're there. How did we get there? And, you know, for the time I first met the principal owner in China several years ago to, you know, secure the deal, an awful lot over those years has occurred here and I wanted to give credit where that's due. The city council spent countless hours on zoning and height issues to pay the wave towards that construction that we're now seeing. Can't even count the number of hours they've been working on that. And staff also worked very tirelessly to accommodate the many demands placed on them. I think hardly anyone at City Hall wasn't involved in one point or another in this project, some more than others, of course, but I think it's affected everyone here and to all those people I want to give my heartfelt thanks to. We still have some detractors a little bit, but sometimes it's a little comical. I'll reference one that I just recently saw and I think maybe probably a lot of you did on the Waterland blog where it says, "This person is wondering why a Chinese enterprise entered our community which is centrally located to McCord Air Force Base, Fort Lewis, Coast Guard Station in Seattle, Banger Submarine Station, Bremington Naval Base. Could we construct such an ideal location in China? He wonders also if it's going to take away business from our Chinese restaurant in Des Moines and how many listening devices are going to be placed in the building during that period of time." So again, we have some detractors, but again, you have to see the humor in some of these things, you know, these are Chinese investors, not communist conspirators. If that were the case, I guess we'd have to worry about the British, the French, the Native Americans, Spanish, Germans, everybody else we have to deal with. But if this is all we have to worry about, then I think we're in pretty good shape. And again, I just want to thank the, all the people that were so involved in getting us to this process and to this point. Without their tireless efforts, we wouldn't be seeing the construction that's going on there right now. Thank you to all my colleagues for the wonderful support in the last few years.
Jeanette.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have any problems with the Mandarin Kitchen going out of business because their food is so good. And also, my only other report is that I finally made it to the 15-minute massage down on Marineview Drive and it's excellent. It's wonderful.
Are you going to go for half an hour next time? Matt?
That's a tough thing to follow, I guess. Well, since last time we were here, there were several things that have gone on. I'm, Dave, I'm hoping you're going to talk more about the retreat, but we did have a council retreat to talk about the budget process and all I really wanted to say at this point in time was thank you to the staff for all their preparation work, helping to give us as much preliminary information as we can get as we move into the budgeting On Tuesday, August 6th, there was a meeting of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. So along with getting our updates to projects going on in the community, we spent some time on permitted uses in the business park, a discussion of our BNO tax structure and some policy discussions around the Pac Highway corridor. Then on August 7th, because we really missed each other, we had another meeting, actually this is a meeting with the public, right here, to talk about the municipal parking lot or parking solutions down in the Marina District. We had folks from several of the local businesses come in and talk, discuss the options with us and I think it was a good foundational conversation to have. I want to thank our city manager, Tony Piaszeki, and Marion, our Economic Development Manager, for putting that together as well. And then tonight, because again, we like to spend a lot of time together, at 5:30, we had our Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting and highlights of that meeting really are the fact that marijuana regulations are coming forward and as a city we, there are actions that we need to take as this moves forward, so the staff's keeping us well-versed in that. And we are starting to look at the positioning that we, we need to, not positioning, the ordinances and so forth that we need to put in place and the zoning that we need to address. And then we reviewed the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan and we had planned to have a discussion about our pavement preservation program. Should Proposition 1 look like it was going to pass, but unfortunately, it looks like that's, it's moving in the wrong direction and is not likely to pass at this time. So we will have to have some more discussion about what to do around our paving and pavement management program. And that concludes my remarks for the committee meetings.
Melissa.
Last Thursday evening, on the 1st of August, we met, the Municipal Facilities Committee met with the two finalists for the Marina Development RFQ that went out. We met with the Arcad Development Group and the Good Fit Development Group. For the public voting, ones interested, videos of that interview process are available on the Des Moines City website. There were two, I think, very good, qualified, creative plans that brought forward. They are both very different plans, so I think it was a great opportunity for the committee as a whole to take a look at the vision that some development professionals have for our Marina. We will be meeting again as a committee next Thursday night, the 15th, to discuss those proposals that came forward and hopefully be bringing those forward to the full council , let's gather a little more information and do some fine tuning on those things. And then on kind of a personal professional note, I wanted to recognize that the editor of the High Line Times, Eric Matheson, is retiring after many years at the helm. He gave me the moniker of the education activist instead of PTA troublemaker, so I would like to thank him for that and wish him well in his retirement. And that concludes my report.
Jeremy.
I just wanted to talk about National Night Out and thank the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Code Enforcement for making their rounds. I understand there was like 32 get-togethers, which was the most in the last couple of years. To remind everybody, we won't be here before school starts. It's merely a month away to pay attention in school zones. North Hill is doing a jumpstart program for the kindergarteners starting next week, so there'll be little ones running around again in school zones. I want to pay attention to them. And last night was the concert in the park and they did a talent show instead of a concert and there was some great talent there. And then this Friday is the Avengers, the movie in the park, so don't miss that. That concludes my report.
Great. I have a few things. First, we received communication from, I have received some comments back from a number of people who are appreciative of the crosswalk striping that's gone in and the sign, better signage and the lighted signs are going to be installed, I believe sometime in September, the lit signs that flash, so that people have an easier time crossing Marineview Drive. And people took note of the signs and the striping and were appreciative of the fact that the council listened to what their concerns were, which we had already had on our list, but it was good to hear back anyways. We also heard back from some people who had expressed concern regarding activities in the south part of Marina and Joe Dusenberry's staff and other staff have been working hard to make the adjustments there. Council passed the ordinance changing the closing time for the South Marina parking lot so that between, I believe it's 10:00 PM and 5:00 in the morning. And so we received appreciative communications back on that as well. Matt mentioned the retreat, budget retreat that we had last Saturday. As always, anytime we're talking about the budget, it's a difficult conversation because we're talking about trying to find out how to fund the services that everybody wants, given the revenue stream that we have, which has been a challenge and has gotten more challenging with the county assessor likely reducing assessed value in the city of Des Moines. And the budgetary impact of that means that we're going to likely lose an additional $300,000 plus in terms of our ability to finance city services. We're looking at all different options in terms of alternatives and how we provide different services. We're looking at ways to make things more efficient and that's in every department, from the Police Department through Parks and everything else. We're going to scrub it to the degree that we can make everything as efficient as possible and we're doing our best to try and grow the economic base in the city so that we're not, we have no ability to raise, raise taxes, so we're, we're trying to grow the business base as much as possible so that revenues will grow into the city. It's going to be a challenge, this is going to be a tough fall and there's no easy answers. The gap is somewhere between $2.5 and $3 million that we're facing between our expenditures and our revenues on an ongoing basis. There are one-time monies that come in from specific projects, but that doesn't cover it forever. So we did have the retreat last Saturday and we'll be having more conversations regarding the budget and options available to us going forward. Lastly, Matt mentioned also Proposition 1. We appreciate the fact that, that you took the time to consider and to vote on it. It's the second time that we've made a request for consideration of increasing the utility tax specifically this time to fund paving and maintaining the streets in Des Moines. Unfortunately, it does appear that it's going to fail. We are going to do our best to try and scrounge some money to be able to at least pave some of the worst spots around, but that may not be possible on some roads because the deterioration is at a point where you would actually have to rebuild and the volume of money necessary to make that happen is not likely. We also may have to make decisions relative to the quality of the material or the way that we pave the road. It may be a chip seal instead of having to use asphalt because it's less expensive and you can cover more road that way, though it doesn't last as long. So there are going to be some tough decisions that we have to make. We're going to try and do what we can to try and pave at least some of the roads in town and we're looking for ways to improve that. Having said all of that, I want to be able to acknowledge somebody and someone.
It is on.
Lee on the High Line Water District Board and has been an active member of our community for a long time. So Dan, if you'd like to come up here for a minute.
I'm always taking these wheels up.
On behalf of the City of Des Moines and your fellow council members, I'd like to hand you this plaque which reads, "Dan Caldwell, in recognition of service to the citizens of Des Moines, Washington, Des Moines City Council, 2012 to 2013."
Thank you. Thank you. In addition, in addition to that, I've got one other thing I want to hand you.
And when we were in the process of trying to figure out who your replacement was going to be and we were asking people, you know, to come forward and they drew cards to determine who would be first to be able to speak. And I wanted you to know that you are still the ace, so.
All right. Thank you. These are, I had a few short comments. I only have an hour's supply on there. Though I wanted to say though, this is, you are some of the finest people I've ever worked with and that's saying a lot. Hopefully, possibly, yes. It's just a pleasant people to work with. The city manager has one of the hardest jobs I know of in this area. He has to put together all the programs. I'm seven-eight right now. Commissioners, birds. I had a new bird walk, must have flown by the house today. Anyway, he doesn't have enough manpower with the current legislature like it is to fully help all of us. And I felt that he was kind of dragging his tail by being two years yet to go through office and all he'd be doing is hanging on and saying, "Yes, sir, okay, yes, sir," but he was long out of effect. But I want to say you are among the finest people I have ever worked with and thank you much.
Thank you, Dan.
Dave?
Matt?
Before we jump off real quick, since we're moving into the administrative report and we're following the packet, I just wanted to take a minute and show everybody our packet. It's an unbound novel, but it's 400 and some odd pages long and I meant to make this in my comment earlier, but I'd really like it if we could consider maybe reducing the packet to that of a series of the executive summaries that are usually, on each topic, that are usually, I don't know, up to five pages or so, because everything else is online and the executive summary gives me the information on the topic, gives me the proposed motions and so forth. And if I really need to see a lot of detail, you can keep all the references in there, but I can look online and I can see that. My thought is it would increase the productivity of our staff and reduce our paper costs tremendously. Looking at this, a ream of paper is 500 pages and we're at 400 and something, almost 500 here, so there's seven reams of paper right here, plus whatever we do for staff. Just a thought. Any input?
Bob and Jeanette.
Well, you know, at the last meeting we had, I held up the packet and said, "This reminds me of James A. Michener novel. This one reminds me of his entire library." However, I think in trying to follow your train of thought here, Matt, we had some discussion earlier regarding some computers for the council. I don't know where that's headed, but I think it would be easier to follow your type of thinking if we had something like that to utilize and get rid of a lot of this paper. But just carte blanche, do it that way, I don't know if that's really what we want to do. So let me ask a question. What's the status on that?
And I know that Dale and Bonnie have been working on that and I really haven't had a chance to get real, much of an update from them over the last month or two.
Is there anything you can report?
We have discussed it at length, especially after last week, and he's still trying to figure out what product would be the best product to use for that. His concern is if we went to laptops, this is a 492-page document, you dump it into Dropbox, you get seven packets of 492-page documents back. So he's trying to think about how to make it not eat up our servers and still get you the best quality packet.
So then to address Matt's concern, maybe we can ask to get some sort of report soon to see what we can do. I doubt very seriously if Dave is going to be encumbering us with, you know, 500-page reports every, every council meeting. These are kind of unusual, but I can see where the need for streamlining it is probably necessary now.
Okay.
And by the way, thank you for coming back. I see we have candy in front of us.
Yeah, I wanted to mention, we do get a few weeks off from council, which is really nice in the summer, but I, I think I spent about 15 hours getting ready for tonight's meeting and I would have rather broken that up into a couple and then the packet wouldn't be so thick. Besides that, and plus I'd be typing with my hands. But anyway, I think that's another possibility is to not try to do everything at once.
Yeah. I think some things have actually backed up that would have been done a little earlier. Yep. And I think part of it also, especially when there's public hearings involved and having to wait for responses back from the state or the public on different things, so we try not to book it all in one thing. Typically during the summer, there's at least one month where there's only one meeting and it's been July or August, I think, in the past, so.
But even during those times too, Dave, when, you know, we have consistent meetings, I know from experience that it can be feast or famine depending on how staff gets things accomplished and how quickly they need to be addressed. So some days it can look pretty lean and mean and other days you look at it and go, oh my God, everything came together at one time. It happens beyond your control.
Did you have any? Okay. All right. Consent agenda.
How about admin report?
I'm sorry, admin report.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to turn the podium over to Chief Delgado.
Thank you, sir. Steve, council members, I'm here today to introduce some friends who are part of a long-term relationship that was just established with our department, but a relationship that will also be community awareness, community outreach, community education based. A few, several months ago, John Yasutaki from the US Department of Justice, who is a conciliation specialist, approached me. I'm sorry, I'm not sure how far back and forth I need to be from this thing. And they've been in contact with WASPIC about an outreach event sponsored by the Amadiya Muslim Community, Muslims for Life, blood drive that started from, an idea that was born out of 9/11, September 11th. And it was the grassroots efforts from this community to support public safety and to change perceptions about the Muslim community. And their goal is 30,000 pints, I believe, of blood a year in collection in support of public safety. Shortly thereafter, I was introduced to Massim Ahmad and Irfan Shadri from the Amadiya Muslim Community, who we've met a couple of times on now and been working on, on this blood drive. And rather than steal their thunder, I will have them come up and talk a little bit about the blood drive, but also to remind the community that on September 7th, was it 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock? 10:00 o'clock at the Public Works Parking Lot, thank you, Dan, at the corner of 24th and 223rd. I'm getting it. The, in partnership with the Puget Sound Blood Center, we will have the opportunity for you to come and give blood in an effort to support this. And our hope is that this relationship will grow into a long-term relationship that will also provide us opportunities to train our officers in cultural awareness, cultural sensitivity, but also to be brokers for peace in essence. And I think it's a great opportunity for us and it's also a great opportunity for Des Moines. And there are some empty storefronts downtown that we can bring some businesses into, so we can talk about that later. But anyway, I'd like to introduce these gentlemen. Come on up.
So Chief Delgado, thank you for the introductions. Mayor Kaplan, members of the city council. My name is Irfan Shadri. I'm the president of the Amadiya Muslim Community, the Seattle chapter. We are a worldwide community based in over 190 countries and again, I have the privilege of serving as the president of the local Seattle chapter here in the Puget Sound area. Chief Delgado did a great, provided a great introduction to our community and the Muslims for Life blood drive that actually started three years ago on the 10th anniversary of 9/11. It was our community's way of commemorating this anniversary and honoring the victims of 9/11. And so in 2011, we raised 10,000 units of blood across the US in partnership with the Red Cross and local blood banks like the Puget Sound Blood Center. Last year, we did a little over 11,000 units and this year, as was mentioned, we're really aiming high and trying to exceed that count. Again, these blood drives are occurring across the nation from between August 11th and October 11th. And again, it's all in the memory of the victims of 9/11. And so this year, we have the privilege of partnering with Chief Delgado, the DOJ, Puget Sound Blood Center here locally in the city of Des Moines, but also other cities here in, up and down the I-5 corridor, city of San Antonio, city of Seattle, et cetera. And so we're here just to remind the community that the drive is occurring on September 7th, as was mentioned, and we'll be here a week or two before at the farmer's market, providing some more information about the blood drive and working with other members of the community to try and raise donations and have people show up on the 7th.
Great. Any questions or?
Great. Thank you very, if you have.
Yeah. How large is the organization, the Seattle group?
We're a little over 300 members.
Okay. And it's out of Seattle?
Actually, our mosque per se is in Linwood, but because we're kind of spread, our members are both on the north side, east side, south side, so it's really considered the Seattle chapter.
Okay. And is this just what your chapter is trying to accomplish or is this what the?
This is nationwide.
National, okay. That's a lot of blood.
Yeah. And yeah, we do have some collateral that we'll leave over for, for folks to review. And John, I think you wanted to say something.
Thank you very much. Thank you, George. To the distinguished council members and Mayor, Mayor Potem, and I met, had the chance to meet Tony earlier on, we're very, we're very pleased and we are just, you know, I guess we're taken aback by the kind of effort your chief has demonstrated and we did a simple outreach, a simple call and before you know it, he's inviting us down and, and just let me give you a real quick background. We were approached by the Amadiya Muslim Community as well as on behalf of the US Attorney's Office, Western District, Janet Durkin's office, and Bruce Miyake's Assistant Attorney General, US Attorney. And they said that there's an opportunity to work with the community as a gesture of their good faith to dispel a lot of the rumors, a lot of the tension fear brought about because of events like 9/11, most recently the Boston Marathon issue or bombing. And so we said, well, here's a great opportunity for us to network with communities as well as working with local law enforcement. And George's name was given, Chief Delgado's name was given us, given to us by Mitch Barker, who's with WASPIC, which is a network of all the police chiefs in the state of Washington as well as sheriffs, so. So he came very well recommended. And let me tell you, he's totally energetic. He came behind 100%, actually 110% if there's such a thing. And we couldn't be happier to have, with respect to his involvement, his sponsorship. But this is, I think, also an opportunity, as I said, the Amadiya community to reach out, as well as your local law enforcement to reach out. We are there to support. We're going to have, hopefully, somebody from the U.S. Attorney's Office there and make it, and we also have somebody working on the media piece. So you'll get some coverage on that, and we think it's a great opportunity for everyone. I have a little packet of information. I don't have enough for everybody. We're kind of a, as you know, we're an austere budget kind of thing, but just some printed information for the council members. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number one, National Recovery Month. Item number two, draft ordinance adopting state marijuana infraction. Item number three, interlocal agreement, Federal Way School District impact fees. Item number four, North Hill Elementary School Zone Flashing Beacon Project grant acceptance. Item number five, draft resolution 13-180, setting a public hearing for permitted uses within the BP zone. And item number six, Transportation Gateway Project Construction Contract Award and Consultant Agreement Supplement for Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for the 24th Avenue South Improvement Project, South 216 Street to South 208 Street. And that concludes the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Musser, seconded by Mayor Pro Tempina. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull? Jeanette?
I'd like to pull item number three.
Your mic's off.
I'd like to pull item number three.
Okay. Is there any other item that a council member wishes to pull? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item number three.
The reason I ask that this interlocal agreement with the Federal Way School District be pulled is that it's to implement impact fees where the school district and the state government, and I guess the city's going along with it, have decided that by building new houses, you are impacting how many schools we need. And I think if I sell my house and somebody with four kids moves in, they're impacting schools more than if somebody buys a new house and doesn't have any children. So I think if we're going to have impact fees for schools, that we should be having those fees placed when somebody has a baby. It would make more sense. So anyway, I am going to vote against this, just because of the philosophy.
Matt?
I just want to say that, you know, I think whenever a school district needs to build or rebuild a school to expand its capacity, the only way to do that is to go to the voters and look for a bond. And currently, that, I mean, that's a challenge, because if, a lot of the funding that does go into education is falling back on the local homeowners. And it's really, it's quite a problem when a community is growing or the population in a community grows and the schools don't. So we end up with overcrowding in the classrooms and throughout the buildings. Impact fees are a very reasonable way to make sure that as you're growing, you're putting some money aside to handle the expand in, the expansion in the educational system. I will admit, it's probably not the perfect way, but I am unaware of any place in the United States where we begin to assess impact fees based on birth. So I will be supporting this. I've lived in education for over eight years, and I've looked at the challenges around providing good places for learning to take place. And, you know, I also guess I would like to add that when new facilities are built, they're generally a community schools model. So the community benefits by generally playgrounds, covered play areas that are for use, and available play fields, ball fields that are used either after school hours or on the weekends. So I guess I just want to say that I think although it's not perfect, it is absolutely necessary, and it's the best way to not put the burden directly on the homeowners, but on those folks that are contributing to the additional population in the community. So I will support it, and I encourage my colleagues to do this as well.
Melissa?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Des Moines and the Federal Way School District to enable the city to distribute school impact fees collected for the landmark key development in accordance with the March 26, 2007 Environmental Mitigation Agreement, and to authorize the city manager to sign the ILA substantially in the form as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Musser, seconded by Mayor Pro Tempina. Tell me? Just want to make a quick comment. What this does is set up a mechanism so the city of Des Moines can pay fees that have already been collected and will be collected for one subdivision only, and that's the landmark key subdivision. What this does not do is set up a school impact fee ordinance for all of the area of Des Moines that is in the Federal Way School District. As the motion said, this only pertains to a subdivision that was approved in 2007 that had a mitigation agreement that said to mitigate the impacts to the Federal Way School, these fees would be collected, and the developer agreed to that when it was adopted.
Right. I would like to point out, the only reason the developer agreed to that is because it was required before he could build the houses. And I still contend that building houses does not cause schoolchildren.
The only thing I'm going to say is that the Growth Management Act requires, under the Growth Management Act, it requires jurisdictions to basically make growth pay for growth. And we've had these philosophical conversations before on any number of things, and I understand that. But this is, this is something that is a tool that Federal Way School District has, and there was, this agreement had been worked out, and so we're complying with what we're required to comply with. So with that, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, sixth one.
But the council's indulgence, I'd like to take old business before we take the public hearings, and start with the modification to short subdivision frontage improvement requirements.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Brandon Carver, the Engineering Services Manager. This item has been before you before, a couple weeks ago, July 25th. And so we're at a second reading. I'm not going to go through much of the past packet in detail, but just highlight a couple of things. Again, this is a modification potentially to Title 17 of the Des Moines Municipal Code. I just, this is new information that I thought would be beneficial, at least from a history perspective. And that's really looking at the history of the sidewalk improvements as a requirement of the real property improvements. And this, this requirement of improvements is coming from Title 12, so it's obviously a different part of the Des Moines Municipal Code, but it may be enlightening or beneficial, I think, for tonight's topic. The requirement to build sidewalk, based on the research I did, looks like it started in January 1993 with an ordinance that required sidewalks, surface water drainage facilities, curb and gutter, when, when real property improvements were made. That was subsequently amended two and a half years later to exclude the single-family home. So that's the history there. And so then by definition, the two-lot short plat, which we're discussing tonight, became, is by definition a subdivision, so it was outside of this amendment. Later that year, there was also an amendment to deal with developments that, or homes in front of an unpaved street. And then the last amendment, a significant amendment, was in March 1999 that created a fee in lieu of construction so that the city had a mechanism whereby a developer could pay a fee if the city had an impending CIP project upcoming. So I just thought that would be beneficial to kind of know where the sidewalk requirement came from. And I believe the RCW in the first ordinance there was sort of the authority, that RCW gives cities the authority to require that improvement. And one of the council members brought, brought that question up during the week. No, no changes in the draft language that was before you two weeks ago. It has the conditions there, three different potential conditions that would warrant or allow an applicant to request a modification. And so we're again pointing to that priority pedestrian network as the basis to where we would still want to see improvements or sidewalk improvements. However, if the frontage was less than 100, then there's that one condition that would be waived for that. So I'm just going to leave the suggested motion that was in the packet up there. The CIPA comment and appeal period has passed, and we did not get any comments. And so I'm available for questions.
On?
Okay, thanks, Brandon.
Thanks, Brandon. I'll move to enact draft ordinance number 13-118, creating a new section to DMMC 17.36.050, allowing for modification to two-lot short subdivision frontage improvements when certain criteria are met.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Sheckler, seconded by Councilmember Musser. Discussion. Jeanette?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to change it from lots of two to four lots. And the city has already decided where we need sidewalks, and we have it all mapped out. And this is where we say we need them. We don't have the money to make hardly any of them. So to have somebody where they're making infill into neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, like North Hill and other neighborhoods, it's not appropriate to make little islands of sidewalks that aren't needed. We've already said they're not needed. And so a four-lot subdivision could be two in front and two in back, or four across. But anyway, I think it would still create an island in a place that's already developed without sidewalks. So that's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Councilmember Burridge, seconded by Councilmember Scott. Other discussion? Matt, or Carmen?
I guess I, I would be more comfortable if this was based on the amount of footage on the street that was going to be affected by the requirement. If it's a deep piece of property that, that maybe is only 120 feet wide, but it has enough depth for more than two lots, and if there are no other sidewalks in the area, and it's a developed area of deep lots, it just seems to me that a little orphaned piece of sidewalk is an extra cost that doesn't make much sense. I, I would be a lot more convinced that it was worthwhile if we knew what surrounded it and how much frontage it would affect, and whether it would ever tie into anything else.
My thought is, is that if we have a unique piece of real estate with those conditions, that just as the Kirkland brothers came forward to counsel and the city with their request that we consider revisions, then we would once again consider revisions. But to make broad sweeping four-lot subdivision, you know, provisions, we may end up with a lot that's 500 feet wide versus 100 feet wide. And then we're going to look at this and go, that was really short-sighted of us to have made a, you're right, if we had made a statement based on the dimensions of a particular lot versus the number of homes that may be put on that lot, it may mathematically or whatever make it easier to understand. But at this point, I think I would be uncomfortable with four. I think it leaves it open to too many variances and possibilities.
Any other discussion of the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails two to five. Any other amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of draft ordinance number 13-118, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Draft ordinance number 13-118, ordinance of the city of Des Moines, Washington, amending DMMC 17.36.050 relating to the construction of street system improvements on rights of way abutting a subdivision. Okay. Surface water management rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the stormwater management rate ordinance. It was last read to you a couple of weeks of, just a couple of housekeeping items. The appendix B, which is the final report for the study, is included in your packet. That's appendix to the ordinance. What is being passed out right now is appendix A, which is not included in your packet. It was left out by accident. But that's supposed to be included with the ordinance as, as appendix to the ordinance. And the rates in that are the same rates that you saw two weeks ago. It's the rates shown in the study with a 2.21% inflation factor added on to that. Also with me tonight is John Gilducci of Financial Consultant Solutions Group that can also answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. The hearing's closed, right? We closed, okay, right. Is there a motion? Matt?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 13-123, revising the definition of the equivalent billing unit, eliminating the 70% rate discount for private streets, revising the classification base rate calculations, and providing the rate adjustment for non-single-family residents and private streets that mitigate the water quality and water quantity impacts to current development standards.
Motion made by Council, Mayor Pro Tempina, seconded by Councilmember Sheckler. Comments? Seeing none. Carmen?
I, I just still feel that this is basically making no sense. I, I think I've lost the argument, so I'm not going to try to argue it again. But I, I felt that some very valid points were made last time it came up, and they don't seem to make any difference. That's all.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Draft ordinance number 13-123, alternate A, ordinance of the city of Des Moines, Washington, relating to surface water management, adding new sections to Chapter 11.12 DMMC, applying findings and authority and adopting by reference the final report of the Stormwater Rates Structure Study, July 2013, amending DMMC 11.12.010 to revise the definition of the equivalent billing unit, EBU, amending DMMC 11.12. Billing Unit, EBU, amending DMMC 11.12.020 to replace the property classification base rates in appendix A attached to this ordinance, amending DMMC 11.12.060 to eliminate the 70% discount for private streets, and amending 11.12.080 for rate adjustments to provide for adjustment in service charges for non-single-family properties that provide water quality and/or water quantity mitigation to that required under the current development standards. Lots of paper to shuffle tonight. First public hearing of the evening, public hearing for draft ordinance number 13-080, planning agency dissolution. And I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Denise Laker, Community Development Manager. For purposes, I know we briefed council back in May on this topic, but for purposes of the public hearing, I'll just provide a brief overview of the role that the planning agency has provided over the past several years. They, our, Des Moines Planning Agency provides input in amendments to our comprehensive plan. So every year, we provide amendments and review through them, and then provide recommendations to the city council. And then, they're also involved in subdivision reviews and preliminary plat approvals. And so, in that situation, they were, back when we had more plats going within the city, they were more, they were involved in those types of projects, and their review and recommendations came to the city council for approval. And then, in addition to that, they've provided support in some of the subarea planning work that we've done. When we developed the critical area regulations and the shoreline master program regulations, we went and had working groups with them, as well as the Marina District Design Guidelines. I did get two comments from some planning agency members, because I know the last time Councilmember Musser suggested, and unfortunately, members couldn't be here, so I thought I would share their comments. The first was Mel McDonald, and he, his comment was that "I think the planning agency role is a positive one for the city. It gives the council another set of eyes on the future of the city. Anytime a city can make decisions with more input is best for all concerns. I would hope the council reinstates the agency. Hope to hear a positive outcome on the decision." The second one is from agency member Shelley Murray, and her comment was, "As a community member, I, as a community volunteer, I welcome the opportunity to assist the council, especially with the issues that have been in front of the agency for review and consideration. I'm not an elected official, not bound to the same level of duty and responsibility or part of the political process. I'm an interested citizen willing to give freely of her time and energy and experiences. As a community volunteer, I listen to those around me in my day-to-day happenings, whether it's shopping, running errands, enjoying the community activities, or taking a walk around the neighborhood. In my role as official, as planning agency member, I consider the comments presented by concerned citizens and businessmen during official meetings and public hearings. As a concerned citizen, I truly consider the impact of the pending decisions and how the decisions made will affect my neighbors and local businesses. Each of the agency members went through a screening process and have committed themselves to serve for a four-year term. This is a diverse group with varied professional experiences, and the discussions have been both lively and informative. In addition, seminars have been offered to this group, and I personally attended very informative seminar on local economic development. With these types of free resources, individual dedication, and the opportunity to, opportunity given to make a difference, the planning agency could be utilized further in the council's work for the city. The council must make the decisions in the end, and with the assistance and input from a committee group such as the planning agency, I believe the council can better support its decisions. Sincerely, Shelley Murray." And then, Shan Hoel, who's the chair of the planning agency, called me today, and he wanted to offer an idea to consider furloughing the planning agency until they were needed. And then, if it's dissolved, he indicated he would look for other opportunities to be involved in the community. And I guess lastly, just my only other comment was, as I had mentioned previously, we've been pretty, as staff, we've been pretty judicious about not just holding planning agency meetings for the sake of holding meetings. We really have used them only when we have business that we need to have them review. And so, with that, I will close my presentation unless you have any comments.
Okay, remember, council, actually, we opened this up at...
Oh, I'm sorry.
This point in time for public comments. And then, if you have comments to make on this item and signed up, you make them from the podium, and no one has signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we're now in council member questions, not comments, questions of staff, Carmen, and Matt, and Melissa.
I'd like to ask Denise a few questions. I was on the planning agency for 10 years, and know that we very often worked with the staff to do a lot of groundwork before things reached council. It was a training ground where you learned about city government as a volunteer, appointed person, and a great source of future council members that gained background by being on the planning agency. What I have heard from you the last time this was brought up is that they have value to you, that your interaction with that group helps make other things work better. And I see here that, under financial impact, that the impact of dissolving the agency is unknown at this time. But there must be some awareness that if those people are not there, then planning staff is going to have to spend more hours doing things that other people are not now there to do for them? So I don't know if this is a trade-off that actually saves us any staff time, or saves us any money in terms of wages.
Well, what I had, the last time I know, one of the things that I was trying to impart is that when we present information to the planning agency, it's sort of a filter before we get information to the city council. So, in many respects, when we are developing the packet for the planning agency, once we get their input, we tweak things and make amendments and do some additional research based upon the input that the agency members provide, which then, really, we take that packet with those minor amendments, and that becomes the city council packet in most cases. And then, the ordinances and that that we need to draft are mostly done until, and then we go through our review with whether it's council committee onto full council. The other thing that the agency has provided for us is, we have limited staffing when we have stakeholder group meetings, public open houses and that. And with, more so from the long-range planning work that we've done, they've served as stakeholders to some of the committees that the city council has appointed. And then, they've also helped us staff some of our public open houses and that. And so, they're at the public open houses, and their neighbors and community members can come up to them and ask questions, and then we discuss those comments and questions at our follow-up planning agency meetings.
Okay. So I still haven't heard a reason that pushes us to make this decision. I haven't heard that it'll save staff time, and I haven't heard that it'll save us cost. And it seems to me we're shutting out a valuable resource.
This is questions right now and not discussion.
Okay, so, I guess, the word furlough up there was an interesting word.
Matt?
So, do we have any, I mean, the reason this first came up was at a retreat, there were discussions about where we spent money and where we might be able to save, and this was highlighted as something that would have a potential savings to the city. And I, like, Councilmember Scott looked at that and said, "Well, the impact is unknown." But it would seem to me that to make the statement that either there would be savings or not, we would have some information, kind of estimating time spent, dollars spent, value, the offset to staff and so forth. Does any of that information exist?
Well, I'll jump in and make a couple of comments. As far as saving dollars, really, the only ones that I can think of are the overtime dollars that we would spend when we have a, one of our hourly staff people actually staff the planning agency meetings. And it's, on average, about three to four hours' worth of overtime to set up the room, run the meeting, and then clean up afterwards. The rest of the staff that would be at the meeting are salaried staff, so there's no overtime that's expended there. I think the issues that Denise brings up regarding another, really, just another set of eyes, another sets of brains looking at something are issues that council has to balance as you're deciding what you, is you want to do here. From a staffing standpoint, going to extra meetings arguably means that, you know, there's things that that staff won't be doing as a result. But then you could also argue that having to take things fresh to the city council may actually take a little bit more time, because they haven't been run through the planning agency once. And again, that's a policy-type issue that council is going to have to wrestle with yourself.
A couple more with this. So, at one point, it was brought to our attention that the planning commission had gotten down to one member, and there were several appointments that had to come forward. Is it a problem for staff to find volunteers that are interested in serving, especially because it's a long-term commitment?
Well, I wasn't involved in the recruitment process before, but right now, it's the first time I've been here that we've had pretty much a whole, full quorum of planning agency members. So I think we have six members at this time, so...
And I'll just comment, we, a few years ago, we did get all the way down, I believe it was, to one planning agency member, and we did have to do a little bit of more aggressive outreach in order to find individuals who are willing to serve.
I remember it very well. And then, the last thing is, to the furlough idea, so is this kind of the type of thing that, for the benefit of, I mean, I see it primarily as that it's kind of a community connection with staff before they finish working things through to bring to council? And maybe I've misinterpreted that, but it, and oftentimes, isn't it true that we have real estate professionals or various other business, folks associated with business that are helping us with these decisions?
Yeah, and that tends to be through our Economic Development Manager. I mean, in terms of that type of input, with the planning agency, we tend to utilize them and have community open houses and that, that are, that, for the most part, any sort of long-range planning, and even with zoning, some of the zoning work that we do, the goal is to be able to provide opportunities beyond just the council hearings for public input in either codevelopment or policy-development. So they've provided that service and assistance in that work.
So, I mean, does it make sense to have a body, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the right thing to do is here. I'm not seeing dollars or anything that's compelling, so does it make sense to have a body like this? And does it make sense that that is a four-year versus a two-year commitment? And is the concept of furloughing, when there's not a lot going on, a good approach, a reasonable approach, when you have a volunteer base, can you get people back together and so forth?
And I would comment that, I mean, that's the crux of the matter here, and I think that's what council has to decide, is, is the value of the input from the planning agency something that is important enough that we need to continue it? From a staff perspective, it does help us refine what it is we're working on. I mean, quite frankly, sometimes going through a trial run with some of the issues and presentations and the like that we do, it's nice to have that as a background. Whether or not it's saving staff time or not to dissolve the planning agency, somewhat arguable, but we do an awful lot of work with the council committees, and I think you described several during your report here earlier this evening. So, that's the policy question.
Okay. Melissa?
So, tell me what would be different than Heber Kennedy? Our consultant came forward with the recommendation to form a committee based on each one of the council members appointing a community member to serve on a specific committee aimed at commercial development of the Marina floor. That group was tasked, based on their experience and their knowledge, and various community members, business members, Shan is planning committee member. Would implementing a by-project committee structure similar to what we had with addressing the building heights in the downtown, we also gathered a community committee of stakeholders to review those zoning changes? That group was dissolved. Then we brought together the committee to work on the commercial development of the Marina. Once that is done, that group will be dissolved. In your opinion, as a staff, is that an effective and efficient way to kind of tackle these zoning and development questions versus a planning commission?
I think it works fine for getting the community input on probably some of the bigger policy development and that. I guess the only, and not that we have that much area that could be redeveloped as subdivisions, but that would be, you know, if we had somebody coming in and wanting to do a subdivision, that would, the review of that subdivision would have to be done by the city council. And so, and it wouldn't be something that you would want a, just a citizens' group to be reviewing, so...
Well, so then that would be my next question. Based on the work that the planning commission does, how does it vary by the work that the Finance and Economic Development Committee does? Because you talked about zoning revisions, you talked about discussions on short plats or PUDs, and that sounds an awful lot like the policy work that the Finance and Economic Committee already does.
Yeah, and that would be a council decision, is if that's the way you would want to proceed without a planning agency, I would assume that could be the structure by which you, one, do the work through the committee level, and number two, do, get the community input on some of the broader planning-type projects and activities by means of establishing stakeholder groups that represent all the different districts of the city, so you're getting a citywide input.
Okay, thank you.
Carmen?
When you mentioned that some of the planning agency members help you at the open houses or in other ways on other projects, would they be paid for doing that?
No, it's, it's, they're volunteered staff.
Would you say that there are generally two, or four, or six people that, if they weren't volunteers, would be paid city staff because they need to be there?
Not necessarily that many, you know? I mean, the primary value that I saw in having them come to the public open houses and meeting is it provided a little bit of a disconnect, or a separation between staff presenting information versus they're sort of the inner, or liaison between the public and staff. And I think that the planning agency members live in the community, they have, they know people in the community, and through the work that we do when we're reviewing information with the planning agency, they feel really comfortable talking about, "Well, this is what, you know, this is what we mean by this," and...
Bob, do you have a question?
Yeah.
So let me see if I'm understanding you right, because this isn't making sense to me at all. You're saying, tell me if this is correct, that they participate in other community functions and events, and therefore there's some value to that. I argue that they would probably be doing that anyways. And what, in your opinion, or in your mind, when you're bringing these things up, are you trying to tell us that having them involved in other community events is a function of the planning agency? It is not. It has nothing to do with the planning agency functions whatsoever. It's just something that they decide that they do out of the kindness of their heart and because they're community-involved people to begin with. So I'm really struggling here with why that's being used as a defense at all.
Anyhow. Are there other questions? Okay. Seeing, saying that I'm going to close the public hearing, oh, excuse me, I have a couple. How many subdivisions have come to the planning agency in the last three years?
None.
Okay. How many of, how many of the things that otherwise would have come as a subdivision actually have come to council in the form of a PUD or some other?
None, and that was my point earlier. We haven't had a lot because of the economic damage.
How many of the larger zoning issues, like redevelopment of Pacific Ridge or other things, did not start with the council before it went to the planning agency?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, or did you have a question, Bob?
Well, I wanted to tail a little bit on where you're headed with that.
Well, probably better in discussion.
Fine.
I'm guessing, but, okay. I close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Bob?
Okay, motion one A. I move to suspend City Council Rule 26A. You know, I still want to say 26B. In order to enact draft ordinance number 13-080 on the first reading.
Second?
Motion made by Councilmember Schechler, seconded by Councilmember Musser. All those in favor suspending the rule? Raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes, six to one.
I'll then move to enact draft ordinance number 13-080 to dissolve the Des Moines Planning Agency.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Councilmember Schechler, seconded by myself. Discussion. Melissa and then Bob.
This is a really hard one for me, coming from a volunteer background and volunteer management, that whenever you have an opportunity in any way, shape, or form for community members to be involved in the decision-making in the city, it's heart-wrenching to eliminate it. However, in my first four years on council, I have been so amazed at staff's willingness to think outside the box by implementing various opportunities for community members to be involved in a smaller capacity, in the sense that I think we've gotten a broader number of community members involved. I look at the names of the people from the comments in the planning agency, and those individuals still attend the open houses. They still speak with council members. Shan and I worked together on the Marina Committee that I may not have had the opportunity even meet or work with him had we not had this opportunity with the ad hoc committee specifically tasked with one. So I, so I look at, if we continued as a council to look for opportunities to have our community members involved in the ways that we are going to economically develop our community, then, then I think this could be a catalyst for positive change.
Bob and then Carmen?
Okay. Yeah, that kind of goes to what I was saying earlier. These are people that are going to be there anyways. They're, that's the makeup of these people. Even though it's not a function of a planning agency, these people are going to get involved in many of the myriad of different opportunities of service or that the city provides for volunteers. But I did have some questions regarding some of the big projects, and Denise can come back up and answer that. Was there any involvement in Waterview Crossing from the planning agency?
In terms of development review, I.
Any?
I don't, I can't answer that question because I wasn't the staff.
Are they involved in any way, shape, or form with the 89 acres at the Port Buyout area?
We've given them briefings on, on the work that's being done regarding that project.
That answers my question. And I certainly know, unless something's been going on that I'm not aware of, on the Artemis Project, nothing there, right?
No, and, and on some of those projects, they, like you said before, the, the planning agency was more involved with residential subdivision review versus development review for commercial projects and that, so that was part of their role.
I think the reason for this is that this city council, of all the city councils I've seen, and that's once every two years, this city council, more than any, wants to get their arms around just about anything that's going to be economically viable for the, this city. And that's one of the reasons why we just don't see a lot coming out of the planning agency. If anything else, they tackle it in committees. They're, they're very possessive of what's going on around here and don't like to delegate it out much at all. And I don't blame them either. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Carmen?
Denise, seems to me they did some extensive research a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, and gave us several reports when we were doing the downtown rezone?
They were more involved in the design guidelines. And so we worked, they were meeting biweekly for about six months when we went through all the different sections of the design guidelines, which then pretty much came to council with not a lot of significant changes based on the work that they had done and the recommendations. But again, that could be something that council shifts to the council committees.
I guess, as a comment, my feeling is that those of us who are on council and council committees are often heavily committed to many, many things and work hard to make it to meetings on time and be available to all meetings. Stakeholders are chosen as people to, to make up a group to talk about something. But planning agency members have the continuity of being involved over a very long period of time, developing a base of understanding and knowledge of how things work. Many of them are, it's like we are shutting down some of a very limited resource of people who are willing and able to give as much time and thought as they have committed themselves to. I'm very uncomfortable at not finding a way to keep them viable.
I have a long history in terms of following this as well, and it goes back to when I was on the council the first time, from 1997 to 2001. And the things that have stood out to me, and we've had, we've been blessed really with a lot of good people who've served on the planning agency. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's been the issue. I think the issue has been that, well, actually, there's been a number of different issues. For a long time, the agency would look at something, and it would come to council. The council would ignore what the agency would do, despite, despite the processes involved. And the, and the council would take the actions that it felt were best suited for the city based on the feedback that we received. In terms of Pacific Ridge in particular, when we first adopted the, the changes up there, we had an extensive number of public meetings and solicited input on that. And we've done that actually with all of the major developments that we've done, or major rezones and other things that we've done throughout the city. We've opened it up to the public. We've taken direct comment back to us, open houses that the staff has had, and we've attended the, when we were going through the period of time when there were a number of subdivisions and PUDs. A lot of those were already coming to us for consideration before it went to the planning agency and then came back to us. So having those additional steps in the, in that process, I don't think added to the, to the quality of the material that we had to review when we were making the decisions on those divisions, subdivisions when they came to us. I think it would save staff time. I think, not the preparation of the materials, they're going to have to prepare it, whether it's for the planning agency or for us, but whether it's for committee or committee of the whole, in terms of the council, the whole, taking a look at some of these things. I think we're well-suited to be able to gauge what the public wants and to be able to solicit a look opinion on these things. And, and it makes sense that since staff is going to have to be here on Thursday nights anyways, that that conversation is going to continue. At one time, I wanted the planning agency to actually take on more. And we, the council passed an ordinance a number of years ago, essentially delegating more authority to the planning agency to take it on, only to find out the state law did not allow us to delegate half of the things that were on the list. So, and, and it was because they were not, they didn't have enough to feel busy. They didn't have enough to feel like that their time was of value. So it's been this balancing act between trying to give them more and not being able to do it and, and the value of what we've been getting back being only marginally of value to us. So with that, I think, I think that we have to make this change. I think this is the time to make it. You know, future councils may reconsider this decision, you know, and there's nothing that prevents it. It also begs the question of the difference between a planning agency and a planning commission and the responsibilities that are defined in state law by that. And this would allow, if in fact a future council were to reconsider the decision, would consider all the options in terms of what a planning entity would actually take on in terms of the role and its responsibilities. So with that, I'd like to commend passage of this. Are there any other comments?
Jeanette?
The only planning commission meeting that I attended about a year ago, a little over a year ago, was on some design guidelines. And one of the new members of the planning agency was a landscape architect. And he suggested a whole bunch of changes to the design guidelines. And everybody on the planning agency went along with it because they figured he knew what he was talking about. But it's not like they all discussed it to vet it before it came to council. I think it would have been better if he had come to council, and then we could look into if those were good things or not, so.
Anymore? Seeing none, all those in favor raise your hand and say aye? Aye. Opposed? Um, Bob, let me read this first. Draft ordinance number 13-080, ordinance of the City of Des Moines, Washington, relating to the dissolution, dissolution of the city's planning agency, repealing chapter 4.28 DMMC, DMMC 17.16.080 and 18.64.060, and all underlying ordinances effective January 1st, 2014. And amending DMMC 17.16.100, 18.56.180, 18.56.200, 18.60.030, 18.60.120, 18.64.010, 18.64.040, 18.84.040, 18.84.060, and 18.84.080. Uh, Bob?
Yeah?
Yeah, I didn't get those last three. Would you repeat? You know, now that this is passed, let me make a couple of comments. Number one, Dave, you're very correct. This is not set in concrete at all. Future councils can reestablish it anytime they wish to. I've had an opportunity over the last few months to talk to my colleagues on, well, on the SCORE board. That's seven different cities, seven different mayors, and ask them about their planning commissions, planning agencies, and what they use. Some of them say, "We couldn't do without them." And some of them say, "We're kind of in the same corner where you are. We don't know what to do with them over the last, particularly since 2008," and what have you. Personally, I can't wait, I hope I'm around for the day when the Des Moines City Council is so inundated with so many projects that they will have to reinstate the planning agency. I'd love to see that day. I truly would. And I think the way things are going right now, that day may come sooner than we anticipate. It doesn't exist right now, obviously. But Dave is correct. The action we're taking right now is not set in concrete in any way, shape, or form. Future councils can change that when the time comes that they simply cannot handle the burden.
Counsel, would you like to take your break now, or would you like to go through? Go forward. Five-minute break?
Five-minute break.
Okay, uh, eight-thirty. Counsel will take a break till eight-thirty. Okay, this is the public hearing for draft ordinance number 13-086 concerning Pacific Ridge zoning. I'm going to open the public hearing. And former Public Building and Plan Works Director, Grant Fredericks.
Management consultant.
Management consultant. There you go.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the committee, Grant Fredericks, assisting with economic development and policy development for the city, assisted by cast of thousands in the planning and building public works department and legal department.
Cast of thousands? That's all we got.
I've, I've distributed a copy of this presentation to council. It's a little different than what was in your package, which we labeled as preliminary. I've also distributed the text of an email that came in to the mayor from the proprietors at the Emerald Valley Auto Sales site. And I'll explain kind of how that all fits in with, with this material here in a moment. There's been quite a bit of recent work on the Pacific Ridge code. These are the ordinances which account, the most recent ordinances which the council have considered on permitted uses in both the commercial and residential zones, on environmental performance standards, dimensional standards, and general building design requirements. This map, you'll also find in Exhibit A of the draft ordinance. It is, it is, in its large form, the new city zoning map. And it incorporates the changes that are proposed by this ordinance in Pacific Ridge. And just to kind of net it out for the community and for the council, basically, we've taken, the proposal is to consolidate the PRC one and PRC two zones into a Pacific Ridge commercial zone, a single zone. And to enlarge the, the area where commercial development is outright permitted, as shown, it extends out to I-5, except for that little green corner in the upper, upper right. The major policy changes that were explained in the package, as I said, redesignates a portion of the, of the residential zone to commercial and combines two commercial zones into a single zone. We expand in a fairly substantial way the permitted uses in both the residential and commercial zones. And we allow some commercial use in the residential zones under certain conditions. The ordinance also puts pretty significant restrictions on the, on the use of property fronting Pacific Highway and 216 and limits residential uses in those particular areas, restricts that to commercial where, where high-density traffic is. But it does allow for there to be residential development, more residential, residential development that is now permitted, and even allows some submerged use projects or some single-purpose residential projects, except in those specific areas. Note, however, that nothing, no residential is permitted under this proposal north of 216. It's the same rules that it currently exists. The, the building heights are proposed to be increased in this area, as shown, from 35 to 70 feet in the residential zone and from 55 to 85 feet in the commercial zone. We also, the ordinance also eliminates the requirement that, to get that higher building height up to 200 feet, the current code currently requires that to be owner-occupied. height up to two-hundred feet, the current code currently requires that to be owner-occupied or condo, a kind of development. The reality, in our view, and talking with the, with the development community, is there just isn't a market for condo development in this particular part of South King County, so that owner-occupied requirement is proposed to be eliminated. We also found, and property owners and developers helped us better understand that, that the thirty-five-foot minimum building height in the old PRC zone, PRC one zone, that is the zone north of two-sixteenth, was problematic, and so that's proposed to be eliminated. We've also heard over the years that it has been, that property owners have been unwilling or unable to redevelop that property because our, our rules require that they put that new building right on the highway, as opposed to setting back from the highway. And that most often, we heard that about the Bartel Drugstore site. We also relax in our judgment in certain dimensional and use percentages and other things which seemed, as we were reviewing these, overly prescriptive. And we also, and Mr. Garnaby can attest to that, we also kept bumping into problems in the code that kind of limited the number of auto-oriented businesses on the highway. And that, that was problematic even for those property owners that had auto-oriented buildings, but the, the code limited the number of businesses that could be in those existing buildings. And so that is proposed to be eliminated in this, in this proposal. Just as we did with the signed code here a couple of weeks ago, there are a number of policy questions which the Finance and Economic Development Committee kind of wrestled with, but could not reach complete agreement on. So the ordinance that was brought forward were those things where there was complete agreement. Where there was not complete agreement, we've identified kind of open policy questions. The first question had to do with the minimum recreation space, and you'll see a reference there to a marginal comment on attachment two. We've tried to provide some cross-references there. You have a question?
If I may interrupt you for just a second. Minimum private recreations?
Private and common, both.
Both? Okay. Thank you.
What does private recreation space? Like that?
Yes.
Yes. The second, and the comment, GF eleven is a, is a, is a specific comment found on, in the margin on page twelve of attachment two. So that's kind of how to read this particular chart. And in some cases, there's a little more explanation offered in those marginal comments. But it shows in the complete Pacific Ridge Zone Code, even those parts of that chapter which are not proposed to be changed, it shows what the policy question, what has been, and invites direction from the council when we get to that point in the continued public hearing on September twelfth. Policy question two talks about some redundancies that are in the code, or things that perhaps are constitutionally vague or unnecessary. We want to get the council in full direction on, on whether there should be language, more, even more language eliminated from the code than is already being proposed. Policy question three, again, is one of those questions where, you know, is, the words sound nice, but when you begin to think about the words, are they really too vague to be in the, in the, in the development regulations section of the code? Policy question four has to do with kind of driveway access, and whether there should be more driveway cuts allowed in this, along the highway. And alternatively, we ask, we have that, pretty well spelled out in our city street design and construction standards, and maybe rather than being prescriptive in the code, maybe we should simply incorporate those requirements by reference into the code, and allow that other document to stand independent, so we don't run the risk of kind of getting our, our design standards and our code kind of out of sequence because we're not kind of paying enough attention as we move forward. Policy question number five raises a question about vehicle storage, which is fairly prescriptive in the code as it currently exists. Policy question six talks about dimensional standards, and asks whether those should be further relaxed or changed to further promote economic development, or whether the changes that are being proposed in that ordinance are sufficient at this time. Question seven has to do with the, with the site design guidelines and the building design guidelines, and whether those are important to have in the code. They are, the design guidelines, only an outline of the design guidelines appear in the code, but more specific design guidelines are incorporated in the Pacific Ridge Neighborhood Improvement Plan. The question's been raised whether those are necessary in the code at all. The next talks about more relaxation of regulations. Policy question nine asks the question whether there should be Pacific Ridge Zone sign, sign regulations in the Pacific Ridge code, or should they remain in the signed code and simply be referenced in the Pacific Ridge code? Policy question ten, it really follows from the, the email that the mayor received from Emerald Valley Auto Sales folks. Was not in your original package. It's kind of an issue that has emerged in the last couple of weeks. When the, the operators of that used car sales operation learned that it appears that their property is kind of being sold out from underneath them, and they wanted the opportunity to relocate to another site, the Hertz, former Hertz rental site on the highway, and whether the ordinance, if adopted, would allow them to do that, or perhaps there's a, a way to allow existing businesses to relocate, but not allow new businesses to start up used car sales businesses. So that's policy question number ten. Your Honor, those are the issues that the committee has, has considered and brings to you for your consideration. Do you have any answer?
Questions? After the, after the public comments. Thank you. So at this point in the hearing, where we're gonna take public comments, comments will be made from the podium, and you have three minutes. The first person, please state your name and add us for the record. First person is Ron Dupard.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Ron Dupard. I am, I am a commercial real estate broker. My company's the best, Coink. I represent Wayne and Deb Ferguson, who are the managing partners of the Smith Court property. We have three hundred and ninety-five feet of frontage on I five, two acres approximately, and this falls within the PRR zone. And we're excited that the city has gone through, you know, met with us a number of times, and has more or less been over backwards to try to work with developers to get a code that will work for everybody, and, you know, incite some development over there. And I think that you guys are gonna be surprised, I think that there's enough activity happening in the area with the eighty-nine acre park going in. There's another seventy-five acre project going in at the bottom of the hill. I don't know how many of you are aware of that. Boeing sold a big project. I don't know. It's quite a few million square feet of industrial will be going in down there. So I think that you're gonna have a lot of demand here in the next twenty-four months, once we get this thing done, and that there's gonna be, something is gonna happen. You're gonna hit critical mass here in the next one to two years. All right? I haven't had a chance to review all of this stuff yet, but the two things that I would like to reiterate, and this is something that we mentioned a number of times in, in the last meeting that we had, is should the city require a minimum recreation space? You know, all of these developers, whatever they're gonna be putting in to a project, they are going to be the ones that know what they're gonna have to offer to amenities, you know, for amenities, in order to get tenants. They, they're gonna know what is and what isn't gonna work. So as far as requiring a developer to put in a certain, a number of, he's gotta, he's gonna have to compete with other projects. They might not be right here. But, you know, a tenant that is looking to rent an apartment, or even get a hotel room, he's gonna be looking at other hotels down the street here, or he might be looking at apartments over in Kent or up in Sea-Tac. And he's, the tenants are gonna be weighing and balancing the recreational amenities. So I, I think it's a bad idea to try to get, to force somebody into putting in so much amenity area or recreation space. I think it's something that should be market-driven. You know, if, if a guy doesn't put in, you know, with the prices that the property's gonna sell for over there, they're gonna have to do something that's of, of pretty good quality. That's one. And regarding the driveway accesses, I don't know exactly what the ordinance regarding the city's street design and construction standards are, but again, I, I just, my comment on that would be that try to leave it wide open so that, because if you start boxing people in and say, no, you can't do that, before you've even seen what someone's proposing, then somebody might come to you with something that's really cool, that you cannot allow because you've written it into your code that way, so.
You have to wrap up now.
Okay, that's fine. That's all, that's the only comments I have for the minute. Okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who did not have a chance to sign up who would like to speak? Second call, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anybody who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember, questions? Again, questions? Carmen?
At, at our Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, I had some material that Tony thought I should bring tonight and bring out that has to do with what Grant is presenting to us. So I don't know if it should be right now or when.
This, I thought your, your material was in regards to the parking code.
Yes, but it all, it also has to do with public rec, private rec, and balconies, and so it's not just parking.
Okay.
So wherever it fits, you let me know.
We should include that in the record, and we made copies.
He made copies.
We made copies as well.
Oh.
So we'll include this as part of the record for...
Do you have all four pages there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
She's got three, or one? Hers are better.
Of course, of course, councilmember Scots are better. Okay, so, to also add to, to also add to the public comments was the email that Grant referenced from the Clarks. Make sure that that's included as part of the record.
So do I have an opportunity to explain how these evolved?
No.
No?
This is question, asking questions of staff. The hearing's gonna be held open until September twelfth, and then we'll have an opportunity at that point in time to be able to talk about, be able to discuss the specifics and debate them.
But I think council has your information in hand, and they can read it.
Great. Jeanette?
Couple of questions. One of them is, one of the slides said that this was going to reduce parking restrictions. I think it was number, no, number eight. Next one? Reduces or removes da-da-da parking restrictions? And I thought that was in the parking code that is a different ordinance. Was there something in this one also?
For the most part, that is in the parking code.
Oh, okay. And then you had asked for some direction from council on the policy things, so do you want that now, or when? We bring it up in September?
September. Good question.
Your Honor, perhaps I could address, by way of clarification, the point that Mr. Dupard made about the recreation space. And just, I, I just wanna kind of refer council members to page two-twenty-two in your package. Two-twenty-two. And marginal comment GF eleven provides a little more history on what has gone on with respect to park, common and private recreation. It just draws council's attention, the fact that it used to be two-hundred square feet of common, and now it's fifty square feet of common, and it used to be sixty square feet of private, and now it's forty square feet of private. So the question is, should there be reductions in addition to those that were made a few years ago, further reductions? That's the policy question.
Thank you for clarifying. Again, we're in questions now. Melissa?
So recreational space, is that specifically for residential units like condominiums and apartments, or would it apply also to hotel motel use?
It's, it's for multifamily.
Okay. And what constitutes common recreation space? Would that, I mean, I would assume outdoor playground, swimming pool, would it also be an indoor weight room? Would that, okay, thank you.
Regarding the, a couple of things I have here. Under the proposed policy changes, number three, I want to be clear, that would allow a strictly multifamily facility in any part of PRC zone that is not fronting PAC Highway South and the south of two-sixteenth, is that correct?
Yes.
So strictly multifamily, in PRC zone, south of...
Two-sixteenth.
South of two-sixteenth, as long as it doesn't front PAC Highway.
Or two-sixteenth. On.
Right.
On, on the east side of PAC Highway.
Okay. And then the, increasing the unrestricted maximum building heights in the PRC zone from fifty-five to eighty-five?
Yes.
Now it'll apply to the west side of PAC Highway as well?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Any other questions, council? Seeing none, is there a motion? Is that, Bob?
I'll move to continue the public hearing on draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero eight six, amending DMMC eighteen point three-one Pacific Ridge Zone Code through September twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard or scheduled by the mayor.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Sheckler, second of my mayor for Tampina. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye. Did you tell the public why we're doing that? Is that we can't do anything tonight?
Correct. Yeah. There's actually two ordinances that are having a hearing, public hearing tonight, and because of state review, we can't take final action on it, and they're being moved to...
and because of uh, state review, um, we can't take final action on it, and they're being moved to September twelfth. We have to start the hearing, public hearing tonight. Thank you for thank you for that. Um, okay. Alright, public hearing draft ordinance number thirteen dash one oh eight, parking code.
Your Honor, the, the format of this staff presentation will follow the same as the Pacific Ridge Zone Code. Um, a number of us, again, collaborated on this, uh, including Tim George, uh, and Denise and other staff members.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What we're doing tonight is uh, is following the same format as the previous hearing, uh, introducing the policy changes uh, and the policy questions which are, were being referred by the full uh, Finance and Economic Development Committee to the council as a whole. Uh, the, the, this ordinance uh, that's being proposed tonight attempts to do a couple of things. One, it attempts to deal with parking regulations uh, as it, as they affect development, but it also has to do with fixing some problems in the parking code that has to do with code enforcement. The parking code has been uh, for the most part, uh, not touched very much uh, for a very, very long time, except uh, beginning in two thousand and eight where we dealt with some parking issues, or commercial parking requirements in Marina District, and we, we did some, some waivers. Uh, we extended those a couple of times. Uh, the current um, parking code waiver expires here at the end of December. Um, we also dealt with some shared parking, uh, added some shared parking uh, options and dealt with outside parking. For the most part, however, this, this code is very, very old. The policy changes that have been uh, recommended to you by the Finance, Finance and Economic Development Committee, uh, the first one allows the city manager, not the hearing examiner, examiner to formally waive or modify the number of required parking spaces. Uh, as we've researched other cities, most other cities provide this authority to their community development uh, directors. It reduces the amount of required parking when hotels offer airport shuttle services, uh, kind of modeled on uh, the city of Sea-Tac. Any better?
And Grant, that's only in the Pacific Ridge areas, correct? So a downtown hotel, Marina District Hotel would not enjoy that?
Uh, it, it is, it is intended to apply to Pacific Ridge, yes. So. That's basically modeled on Sea-Tac's um, airport shuttle uh, parking requirements. Um, we we struggled with how to deal with people who park in their front yard or on their side yard. Uh, we struggled a lot with that because it's a code enforcement nightmare, and the language that we're uh, proposing there basically eliminates all the kind of overly prescriptive way uh, for two reasons. One, it's almost unenforceable. And two, it, it gets us involved in all sorts of having to measure uh, uh, how far the, the houses from the, from the right away, um, how deep the front yard is, uh, and it's, it has proven to be a code enforcement nightmare. And it ha- it happens all over, all over town. It doesn't limit to any particular area. Policy question four, um, basically uh, allows on a, on a managed parking situation, allows tandem or, or valet stacked parking, which is, which is not provided for in our code currently. So if a let's use, for example, the Artemis Hotel wants to do a valet parking operation, um, and it's managed, they can use space and stack cars, you know, end to end, uh, in a way that um, they propose and we approve.
And that would allow a smaller area to actually have more cars parked and count toward meeting the parking requirement?
Exactly right. But it does have to be under a city-approved plan based upon a pretty tight um, plan requirement, uh, that's again modeled on Sea-Tac's experience. Policy question five, um, um, really, again, follows from some code enforcement issues that we've been struggling with on uh, how to deal with uh, people who um, want to use recreational vehicles to live in um, for a period of time. Uh, under a city building permit, uh, some, if somebody's remodeling uh, a portion of their house, for example, and is a, in a city-approved condition on their building permit, they can do that. They can live in a trailer or an RV uh, while that work is underway and is, is progressing. Uh, if other people have family uh, visiting uh, from out of town, and they either, you know, they, they just need a place to bunk, uh, the c- the code, the ordinance as proposed would allow up to four weeks uh, of use of recreational vehicle for, for occupancy. We've also had a few issues where we've, where our prosecutors have had a difficult time um, being successful in court, uh, dealing with uh, um, prosecuting uh, uh, issues uh, for which people have been ticketed, and we're just trying to bring our language kind of in line with the court's expectations with respect to um, being clear about what's, and what's an infraction that's, that's enforceable or not. So that, there's basically two policy questions which we asked the council to think about and provide as direction on September twelfth. Uh, the first is, is four weeks the right amount of time for people to be allowed to use a recreational vehicle to live in? A family member, uh, or somebody with their permission to live in, or should it be a longer period of time? Uh, the second question, and this is kind of anticipating kind of the expiration of the Marina District Commercial Bu- Commercial Parking um, waiver that expires here at the end of the year. Uh, if we're opening up the code to deal with other parking code issues, should we deal with this issue at the same time? Uh, and extend that or simply allow that to, that waiver to, to expire? So Your Honor, those are the uh, the policy issues and questions which we have, and again, as you've explained, uh, this, uh, we're in, in the SEPA review and comment period, that will be followed by a SEPA appeal period, and uh, the law, and our municipal code requires the council to consider any appeals to the SEPA decision at the time in a consolidated hearing at the time it, it considers the ordinance itself, and that requires, that will not be, uh, they'll, they'll not be able to do that until September twelfth.
Now, the public comment portion of the uh, hearing, and nobody has signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Third and final call, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seen none, council, questions of staff? Uh, Melissa?
Um, I was just curious, um, what is, when we're speaking about the um, recreational vehicle for not more than four weeks, except when specifically allowed under DMMC eighteen dot thirty-six dot one thirty?
That's a building code condition that I was just trying to explain.
Is there a renewable provision in that? Let's say-
It's a six-month uh, building permit with a six-month renewal, so it could be up to a year.
So someone, if they were doing second straight out and just didn't want to get bits in the asphalt, they could potentially use that as a bonus for up to six months to try to renew it every four weeks?
No, they could do it up to six months, and then if they weren't quite finished, they could ask for it to be, ask for their building permit to be renewed for another six months, so they'd have a year potentially available to them.
So this is more of a recreational, parents are staying in a place and not for four weeks, and then it's a renewable permit, or it's a catalog four weeks? Okay, thank you.
The answer is the, the four weeks are not renewable. Now, someone certainly could stay there for four weeks, drive to a RV park for a couple of days and come back for another four weeks, but of the financial policy issues outside of that. Matt?
Grant, I, on the four-week renewable, uh, non-renewable portion, isn't that also complaint-based?
It, it is complaint-based, and typically our complaints uh, take a while to get to, and then we do uh, kind of a, a letter notice that gives folks uh, perhaps two weeks to cure the um, the issue. Um, so it, you know, practically speaking, if it goes right into a code enforcement complaint-based action, it's probably gonna be three to four weeks before uh, somebody gets around to getting the ticket.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none, is there a motion to continue the public hearing? Bob?
I'll move to continue, excuse me.
I'll move to continue the public hearing on draft ordinance number thirteen dash one oh eight, pending DMMC eighteen point four four parking code through September twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, or as soon thereafter, as a matter may be heard or scheduled by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Schechter, second by Councilmember Mustard. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Either not. Last item of the evening. Public hearing, continue public hearing, on draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero one one. Um, I'm going to ask uh, Grant to bring us up to speed, see if we heard back from the state on that, and where we're at. Cause we're still in public hearing, correct? Yeah. Wow. It's like you're dysphetic, huh? What am I doing? Sorry, here.
Your Honor, this is a continuation of the public hearing from two weeks ago. Uh, I've handed out uh, two items uh, for you. One is an updated uh, copy of the presentation which we um, are making tonight, and the second is um, a list of, of council member requested amendments to the ordinance that is before you. We'll just run quickly through the presentation again, and then skip over a, a few of the things, go over them very quickly. The, these are the items which we told you were in the, uh, were most recently adopted uh, in two thousand and eleven, so we dealt with a lot of those issues uh, in two thousand and eleven. Uh, we have policy changes that are being proposed, uh, simple family permit uses, uh, per- per- permit expiration, prohibited signs, uh, placement of signs, off-premises and reader board signs and commercial zone signage. I apologize for the small print, I apologize to the audience for that. Uh, what on the copy that you've, you've received, the, these are the, for the most part, the same policy questions which we laid out in the staff presentation from two weeks ago, but shown in red here are the, the reference to the council member requested amendments. So you can see what we asked you for direction on, and you may have a colleague that proposes to move a particular amendment, which is numbered uh, there and refers to that particular policy question. So, um, perhaps, Your Honor, I can just go through those really quickly, and then we can come back, uh, once you have a motion on the table, and then we can get policy direction, however you'd like to handle that. We, we don't have a motion on the table right now, so-
Right. So, um, so these are the proposed, these are the proposed amendments, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Your Honor, I'd suggest that before we tackle any of these, we let Grant finish whatever additional information he's gonna provide in the presentation, close that part of the public hearing, and then get a motion on the table before you entertain any of these amendments.
Correct.
So, for the most part, these are the same policy questions we, we asked uh, the council uh, here two weeks ago, and you understand the, the red uh, items. Um, so for the most part, those are the same twelve policy questions. Um, we did receive council member requests for two additional amendments which were not, we had not identified as open policy questions, and those are shown here as A and B on, on this slide. Uh, one has to do with wall sign size, and the second has to do with uh, the number of uh, freestanding signs permitted in the Marina District, um, which essentially allows, potentially allows more signs because the, the minimum frontage width is reduced, thereby making some uh, some properties eligible for freestanding signs that would not otherwise be now eligible. The, the next series of slides, uh, these are slides which were uh, included in our last briefing. It just shows um, different sign sizes of existing Marina District signs, for the most part. By point of reference, uh, these are signs uh, out on the highway, uh, of course, those signs are in Kent. Um, some of them, uh, well, those are all new signs. Fred Meyer signs, uh, there's two types of signs on the Fred Meyer site. Uh, you'll see on the left side, the marginal note in, or the note in the center of the page on the left, uh, draws attention to a pre-existing sign. That was a sign that existed before they tore everything down and rebuilt it. So it is a non-conforming sign in Kent. Uh, and then the new signs which they built are, are shown there with the appropriate sizes. We showed you signs of the uh, of the electronic portion of the Furny's sign. We, we only had a, a couple of measurements on the sign at that particular time. It's about twenty-three square feet of the electronic reader board sign. The, the sign is, is a little over eleven foot tall. We just had a little dimension. Uh, we showed you this slide before. It's out of the Seating Highways Act uh, rules that the federal government promulgated in nineteen seventy-one, for the most part, and Washington has adopted and implemented. Just wanna draw the council's attention to the note, the, on the lower right-hand corner. We showed you this graphic before. Uh, I think we, we led you to believe that this, these rules apply to, to on-premises signs in Des Moines. The, the fact is, they do not apply. These are type-three signs. They do not apply to incorporated cities like ours. So, um, just wanted to kind of correct the record on that. Uh, these were examples of rooftop signs that Denise uh, pulled off the, off the web uh, as kind of illustrative of what a roof sign might look like. We had the Graceluther Church folks come and talk about what they wanted to do at the corner of Twenty-Fourth and Kent, and one road for their sign, and they, and they brought to our attention this Mount Ringler High School sign, uh, which is about eighty-five square feet. Uh, it's about ten foot tall and eight and a half foot wide. It has a twenty square foot of reader board incorporated. Um, frankly, our institutional memory is gone on how that, a sign that size get, got built, because it's not, it would not be currently permitted in our, under our uh, sign code, because it is a residential Lee Zone property, and it is size limited. Uh, it got built. We're not exactly sure how that happened, but it, but it, it, it is what it is. Your Honor, you asked about- Your Honor, you asked about, give some examples of some signs along the highway, billboard-type signs. This sign on the left is right, kind of at the northern edge across the street from the Fred Meyer site. Seven hundred and twenty square feet, thirty-two foot high, forty-eight feet long, as best we can tell. The sign portion itself is fifteen feet tall. The sign on the right is actually C-TAC. It's a much larger billboard, thirteen hundred square feet, hundred and fifteen feet tall, and fifty foot by twenty-six foot in dimension. An example of another kind of grandfather non-conforming sign, the Seglon Insurance site on Pacific Highway here in Des Moines. About twenty feet tall. It's kind of a flunky perimeter, but it's about seventy square feet of sign area. Those are just kind of data points of reference as you consider the amendment or the ordinance. So, Your Honor, that concludes the kind of updated staff presentation.
Since we're still in the public hearing, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, I don't know if anyone signed up, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll get your comments on the record.
I'm BJ Bjornaby. I own property on two-twentieth and Pacific Highway South for my business. And my residence is five-seventeen South Two-twelfth on North Hill in Des Moines. I appreciate the opportunity to talk, and I need to echo his kudos for what the council is doing to promote business from, the changes from the past are just immense, and we certainly appreciate it. And I had opportunities to come to some sign committee meetings and, or sign talk meetings, and either ignored them, forgot them, or whatever. So I guess I deserve what I get. But one of the things that I had mentioned at another opportunity that I spoke was the sign that I was allowed to put on my building, two, one on the wall on the building and then the other out on the corner, were required to be opaque. And so, and our Carstar, the franchise colors are white background with words that say Carstar and Bjornaby's and like that. And so at night, all you can see with the opaque white background, during the day it's white, it looks normal. Like with the opaqueness, and I'd invite you again to drive by and look at it at night when it's dark sometime, you'll see you can see it. Because it's just not there. It's ghostly blue and red letters with no background at all. So if there is any other considerations to do it, if to eliminate that piece, not just for mine, I'm certain there are some other people that would like to have a white background on their sign at night and like that. Other than that, thank you for what you guys are doing, for all of the stuff, the changing and the zoning, and allowing businesses or buildings, maybe buildings, to be operated as what they were built for, as opposed to what we think would be cool to have there. So thank you again.
Question? Mr. Bjornaby? Do you have a question?
BJ? I wanted to ask you about, you had a comment to me at one point about roof signs, and if you could expand on that to the council, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm more than happy to. If you've been by my place on two-twentieth, we're below grade, and the top of my building is probably almost right at grade of Highway ninety-nine. If you're on the north side, I mean, on the northbound lane, you can just barely see over the guardrail. You can just barely see the stacks, our exhaust stacks from our paint booths and the like. And you can't see the roof of the building because it's not in line. And southbound, you can see the roof of the building, but you can, excuse me, but you don't see much of it. And at the time, signs, all the signs had to be below the top edge of the roof. And I asked if I could put it, like, on the top edge of the roof so that you could see it, but at the time, it wasn't allowed and like that. So if I could, if I could only move my sign up to the top edge, I'd like to be a little higher so that, so that when, when you're in the northbound lane, you could still see over the guardrail and see some signage and like that. And I would also like that any other tenants, because we use half the building and the other half is available for tenants, and they probably would like to have signs that would be visible also. And it would, I believe, help me fill the vacancies and like that. Because it is, it's a warehouse kind of building and was built to not necessarily have any, any... No one ever cared much about any signs, but if we're to attract any retail kind of things, then we would certainly want to have better visibility.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor Kaplan, Councilmember, I'm Malcolm Case, and I'm currently the president of Gracelythyr Church. And I know you had a couple folks, your last meeting, talk about Grace's concerns. But I just want to make a couple of comments that what's being discussed and considered is a lot to do, seems to be, with consistencies of signs and those kind of things. And I just want to make you folks know that it's not really about, the argument for us is not really just about the consistency that Mount Riner got by with a bigger sign than we did. What we're really trying to do is upgrade the looks of the church, which is obviously a part of the community. And right now, we have a sign that's fallen apart, it's rotted, it's an ice saw. We want to upgrade that as we've done with the grounds. So what we're really looking for is, we have a lot of act, we want to replace the sign so we have a nicer-looking sign there. But more importantly, there's a lot of activities that go on in the church with, as your community oriented with blood banks, dental vans, and all of those kind of things. And most of the time now, we have to stick up banners and other kind of signs which don't look the best either. So we're really looking for a sign that allows us, electronic sign, that we can advertise the things that are going on, that people can see in a manner that's not restricted enough that people that are going by can't read it, then it becomes probably a safety issue. But we're just trying to upgrade, get a sign that meets our needs as well as the needs of the community. So if you just take that in mind, it's not just about consistency, it's about a lot more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We have your letter also, which we will enter into the record, and leave everybody to receive a copy of that. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Anybody else who wishes to speak? Third and final caller, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing that, Council, any questions of staff or the other speakers, Jeanette?
Yes, Grant, you had up there a non-conforming sign that was seventy square feet and twenty feet tall. And I think it was non-conforming because of the height. Isn't the square footage now eighty square feet? So that was okay?
It was the height.
Was the height, okay. And also, you, I don't remember seeing anything in there about the opaque sign thing. Do you know where that is?
I do recall that Mr. Bjornaby had mentioned that in this, and we had not, we had not brought that back to the committee for clarification. There is a section in the code, refer to page three hundred and thirty-one, section eighteen forty-two, one eighty, on illumination. Denise and I were just kind of putting our heads together. There's no specific opaqueness issue identified here in this illumination chapter. And what we think is that the council-adopted Pacific Ridge design guidelines includes that requirement. So if, we don't think there'd be a need to amend this ordinance to address that, but we could certainly entertain or suggest that if council wanted to do this, you could direct us to do an amendment to the Pacific Ridge design guidelines, and then bring back that to the council on consent or in whatever form you thought would be most appropriate. And we could just deal with that illumination issue in that way.
Melissa?
When was Mr. Bjornaby's sign installed? I'm wondering if we haven't already addressed that with all of the Pacific Ridge design... No, don't even say it, never mind.
No, we've changed a lot of the Pacific Ridge code. We haven't changed very much if, at any of the design guidelines for Pacific Ridge.
Councilors are interested in having that brought back to us?
Yes.
Okay. Please add that to the pile.
Make it so.
Okay, any other questions, Council? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion to waive Council Rule twenty-six A in order to an act draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero one one, amending DMMC eighteen point four two, sign code on first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor suspending the rule, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I move to an act draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero one one, amending DMMC eighteen point four two, the sign code.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Yes, but let me get to... Okay. I sorted through these today so that we could take them in order, and I've got references in case you have a hard time.
Did you vote on that? Did I miss something?
What?
So you made the motion to an act draft...
You suspended the rule.
Yeah, and then you made the motion to...
Right. Right.
And now we're going to start.
Now we're going to start the amendments.
I'm sorry. Felt like I missed something. My mistake.
The difference here is that we are advised of the amendments in advance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The first amend, actually, yeah.
Should I make it?
Let's see, well, yes. The order is slightly different just in terms of taking them in order. So, let's, okay, let's do it this way. Amendment number one would be, as noted there, as motion number one, which is on actually page twenty-three of the ordinance or page three hundred and seven of our packet. Okay, Jeanette?
I move to change the number on, in eighteen point four two point zero five zero, number seven, to change it from twelve square feet to thirty-six square feet, and actually to include the word "not" before "over." So the sign is not over thirty-six square feet.
Is there a second?
And actually, and then also needs to say "if allowed" in that zone. In case there's some zones where that size isn't in.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Melissa?
At first, I was like, oh, thirty-six square feet. But then when we started seeing examples of what that looks like in the real world, it's not that big. I mean, you're looking at it next to cars and landscaping and sidewalks, so I'm comfortable with the thirty-six feet.
Good question. I think I got a little lost here. We're apparently not going by this?
We are going by this.
That wasn't right.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on page, it's actually on page twenty-three of the ordinance. Instead of twenty-one, it's on page twenty-three of the ordinance and page three oh seven of the packet. So I'm going to give you both references so that way everyone can, I chunked it today tracking it.
That's what threw me.
Yeah, no problem. So, any discussion?
That's what the word "not" added in front of.
Not over.
Not over thirty-six.
If allowed in the...
If allowed in that zone. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Don't try to follow here. Okay, okay. So motion passes, seven to nothing. Okay, the second motion would actually be number three. And that is on page twenty-three, also on page three oh seven of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanette?
What do you mean three? It looks like it's two. I'm lost.
So we're skipping two and going to...
We're skipping two and going to three. We're taking things in order in how it flows through the ordinance.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, I move that the ordinance be amended in eighteen point four two zero five zero exemptions eight to allow the on-premises non-illuminated bulletin board to be not over twenty-four square feet in area for a charitable or religious organization. And that, I think, goes with the other parts of the code where there's twenty-four square feet for a reader board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah.
Bob?
This is the one that the church brought up, right?
No.
No?
Okay, in any case, all right. Okay. I withdraw.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven to nothing. Okay, now, motion that's listed there is number two. It's the third one we're taking. It's on page twenty-five, page three oh of the ordinance, three oh nine of the packet. Jeanette?
I move that on ordinance eighteen point four two point zero five zero, section eight, oops, I'm sorry. Twelve aye, be amended to read instead of professionally prepared, that they be professionally looking and maintained in good condition.
Is it our second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Matt?
Looking, professionally looking is very subjective and very vague. I think it'd be hard to enforce, and I am not, I cannot say I'm comfortable with that.
Melissa, and then Jeanette, and then Carmen, and then Bob.
I can think of six signs right now on Marineview Drive that are professional-looking but that are clearly crafty hands-at-home created. And I would hate to see that those businesses would, you know, either A, not have that sign out to draw in business, or barely, I mean, I have, I don't know how many complaints City has gotten about those signs, if they're adhering to the other regulations around them being out when the opening hours of business. You know, we just went through... Waterline CrossFit, there's an accounting, there's an accounting company that puts out their sign in front of K and L Accounting or something, and it's made with press-on letters on a white sandwich board, and they put it out when they're doing tax returns, and then it goes in. I think the All-Star has a sign that they handwrite out, that they put, it's like a whiteboard, but they handwrite on it what band is playing that night. So that could be created, you mean, that could be termed, you know. So I would just say that it is subjective, but I guess I've lessened my opinion on that since I was the one that first proposed that language when we enacted it the last time.
Jeanette, Carmen, Bob.
One of the things that made me bring this up is that a church that I know of has a hand-carved sign, and it's beautiful, and we happen to have a wood...
and it's beautiful and we happen to have a woodworker that goes to the church that made it and, but I, we didn't pay him to do it. And that's not his profession.
Uh, Carmen?
I, every time I go to a town that has character, I take pictures of anything that we might want to think about. And often the signs that are in front of quaint stores or restaurants or shops are hand-lettered in a charming style with a lot of character put into it. It's almost a piece of art. Sometimes they are menus. Sometimes they're telling about an event or an activity and what time it happens. I, I think we are being much too restrictive if we try to stop creativity. It needs to have a professional appearance. But I, I would hate to stymie people who have character and, and style in their signs that they do themselves. And they often are signs that change quite often with perhaps a blackboard type background or a whiteboard type background.
Bob?
Well, I guess this is a matter of semantics again. I hate it when we get in conversations like this, but yeah, it's kind of like art. You know, sometimes it's just too subjective. I, I think I relate better to professionally prepared knowing it's coming from some professional organization and someone's interpretation of looking. And that's why I would probably prefer to leave it just the way it is.
If I might suggest a compromise in terms of language.
Go right ahead.
Signs shall have a professional appearance and maintain-
I'd take that as a friendly amendment.
Good, Melissa?
I would accept that. I actually wrote that before you said it, so there we go.
Hey, it's semantics.
Question?
So it's incorporated into the amendment, yes?
And again, I can accept language like that, but I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that. But I'm reaching out to staff because again, I don't think that's enforceable. So I'd, I'd like to know from staff what would be enforceable. I mean, again, it's not my, it's not my intent to prevent, you know, creative character or anything like that, but if you're putting something in a code that's not enforceable, then don't put it in at all. So I'm asking staff.
Well, here-
These are the, these are the-
Let me give you a couple thoughts on this. First of all, and no offense to any of our professional sign makers out there, but just because a professional who sells signs makes a sign doesn't mean that it's a really good-looking sign.
Agreed.
Uh, so there's still some subjectivity when it comes to that. Not that it's easy for us to look at a sign and say that looks professional or has a professional appearance, but I'm thinking that if we have something that really does look just god-awful, it's kind of one of those things, you know it when you see it.
Exactly.
Uh, and it's going to have to be something that is very egregious and we receive a complaint about that we would have to deal with. So I don't think, quite frankly, you can craft any really super-strong language that is going to give us a good, strong piece of code that is clearly easy to enforce.
So the question then goes, we've agreed on, was it professional, what was it?
Appearance.
Appearance.
Professional appearance.
And as deemed by?
Well, with the way it's throughout, it would be based upon the interpretation of staff.
If you guys are fine with, I think you-
I'm not telling you it's perfect, but it's something that we certainly can work with.
Well, I can live with appearance. I was just trying to help the staff with something that's enforceable. And if it's, I mean, I find leaving it to go all the way up to the city manager for his or her sale of approval, but, and he's going, thanks a lot. But, you know, I just feel like the buck should stop somewhere if you're going to try and enforce something.
Yeah. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, nothing. Okay, motion number four is, motion listed as number four, page twenty-eight, page thirty, three hundred and twelve of the packet, page twenty-eight of the ordinance and page three twelve of the packet. Jeanette?
It's not twenty-seven? I move that the ordinance in eighteen forty-two, one fifty-six be amended to allow some off-premises signs as indicated in the amendment here where the language is stricken out, off-premises signs, except one sign for a Des Moines business that is twelve square feet or under. And-
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
So-
Go ahead, Jeanette. Explain the-
Yeah, yeah. Well, I first was thinking, tried to eliminate it and just let it be used, any leftover sign space that a business didn't use that was allowed under the sign code. But this, I think, will help businesses, especially small businesses where they're off the main road, like Blue Vanilla Bakery, which now they do with some temporary signs. But I think a small sign that would, you know, let people know that there's a business back behind Highway ninety-nine or, or Marineview Drive, I think, might be helpful to those businesses. And I don't, I think a small sign would not be too distracting.
Melissa and then Carmen?
So I'm not reading point two-seven-zero very closely yet. So what would be the guidelines as to where that could be placed? For exam, you know, for example, could the yardarm put a sign in front of the All-Star? You know, we've got cheaper beer, you know. But I mean, what are the specifications around what signs can go where?
The owner has to approve any sign that goes on their own property.
Okay.
But people lease properties, so is it the owner of the business? There could be three or four businesses on a property. Does the owner approve it?
So that, that, to me, I think the, I mean, that's why I like the Blue Vanilla. Oh, like that.
Just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about portable signs. Portable signs are allowed.
Right.
A-frame signs. We're talking now about permanent install signs.
So like for Anthony's, if they wanted to put a sign at the corner by the Red Robin directing people where Anthony's was, that under this, that would be allowed?
As long as the Red Robin gave them permission.
Carmen? And then Matt?
I, I didn't have my hand up.
Stop laughing. Matt?
So in the case of Des Moines Drug, because they're back off the beaten path, they have a sign up in the corner of Red Robin. Is that a non-conforming use today?
You're talking about the directional sign that's at the driveway of Red Robin?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a off-premise sign that would be, that is non-conforming.
Making this change would allow those, that sign like that?
That sign may still be too big, given the size and the fact that it's a pole sign. So that would still probably be a non-conforming sign. But they would be allowed, let's say it didn't exist there, this provision, provision would allow for some sort of sign to be put at that driveway pointing to the fact that Des Moines Drug exists. Along, in a similar vein, what about the sign for Salties on the corner of two, or two seventy-second and sixteen?
Yeah.
It's also a further requirement.
And, yes, that's true. Okay?
And I should say, this is still subject to right-of-way permit by the public. So I mean, people can just start installing signs in the right-of-way without getting-
If it's in the right-of-way, if it's on somebody else's private property, then it's just subject to the dimensional standards in an agreement with property.
So would that be limited to commercial properties only? Or if there's residential properties abutting the main, I'm thinking like North Hill, if somebody wanted to put a business sign in their residential yard directing them to like a home business further in the neighborhood, would that be allowed?
My, my understanding is it would not be allowed.
Because home, locations are not allowed by signs.
So this would only be for commercial signage in commercial zones?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Twelve square feet's not big enough.
I'm, I'm not com, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with this, though I understand the intent behind it. And I guess it's the enforcement that will be interesting to see how this plays out. So all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes five to two? Okay. Now. Motion's five or five A.
We're on-
Is there a motion?
We're on page twenty-seven?
Page twenty-nine, page three thirteen of the packet.
Your honor, maybe I can express, I mean, alternative motion five A is one that staff crafted just to kind of avoid having kind of prescriptive language in two different parts of the code that can get out of sync. And so we, we're just incorporating reference to another section. So we only have to worry about this particular regulation one place and don't have to remember that it's also in another place.
So-
Difference between the two?
What is the difference?
What, what, one has dimensional standards. One, on motion five is one sign per business location under twelve square feet. And this, and alternative motion refers to eighteen forty-two, one fifty, which you've just chosen to amend. So we don't have to repeat that same language. We simply refer to that.
So five A would be the appropriate motion?
Show if that were the staff.
Eighteen forty-two, one five oh is one sign that's twelve square feet.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone to make the motion or no?
This is the staff-proposed motion?
Five A is kind of, and it's trying to accomplish what five did, but it's in a way that we think is a little more structurally.
Okay. Is there, okay. Is there, is there a motion or not?
I'll move it for him. Um, I move that the ordinance be amended in eighteen point four-two point two-seven-zero as provided in this handout where it says, "Accept those signs approved pursuant to Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen point four-two point zero-nine-zero" and Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen point four-two point one fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Mayor Protim Pina.
I wonder you spent fifteen hours on your packet.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-one. Now, motion number six is actually listed as motion number seven. It's on pages twenty-nine and thirty, page three hundred and thirteen. Is there a motion?
Go over that again. Six is really separate. Which one are we on?
Motion, we're, look at motion number seven.
Oh, okay.
Page, it's actually pages twenty-nine and thirty would be the effect of it on page three thirteen of your packet. Three thirteen and fourteen. Is your motion?
Okay. I forget why I did that. I'll start the discussion. Move to amendment eighteen forty-two, three hundred to delete section one, which has to do with one four-square-foot sign. And I believe the rest of the code allows more than that and that this is just superfluous.
So your intent is to make the Redondo Commercial Zone consistent with the, like the- This is a neighborhood commercial zone.
Staff, please remind council the limited number of not, of neighborhood commercial zone properties in the city.
We have City Hall, we have Redondo, and we have a small section of City Highway north of Shopping Center.
No, it's City Hall, the Xena Viewpoint property across from the landmark and then the Redondo Store. However, if you read this, it says, this is for signs in neighborhood commercial zone and that commercially zoned areas of Redondo, which would then also include where Salties and the Mass, wait, actually, I think the Mass Center, I believe are also commercially zoned properties. Is there a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion because I don't understand what's happening.
Well, if you look at number two, it says the total sign area shall not exceed one square foot per linear foot to a maximum of a hundred square feet. And freestanding signs can't be more than forty square feet. So it already says what size they can have. I don't understand why they would say something about a four-square-foot sign when they could or could have that enter two. I don't understand why they even put one in there.
So permanently affixed to a wall. More than twelve. Yeah, you're right.
It's just a technical thing. It just doesn't make any sense to say you can have-
Yeah, because they'll go with the one that's more.
Right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, motion number six, or six A.
Motion six, when it says from the floor, what, what that means is there's nothing in the ordinance in this particular section. So we're introducing amended language in a part of the sign code that's not in the draft ordinance. That's what from the floor means.
And so if, 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 if council will turn to page three thirty-four of your packet, you will find the existing ordinance plus the proposed changes prior to, prior to this.
Perhaps, your honor, I could explain the difference between six and six A. Six A is what I'll call the Grace Lutheran Church requested amended language. That basically takes what the church has asked to consider and consolidates some language that was in the residential zone, which isn't part of the sign code, but we've, we've found ourselves with some regular, sign regulatory language in the residential zone part of the municipal code, which we think it all ought to be in the sign code. So it combines those two things and incorporates for schools, community centers and churches, this, this authority to have eighty square feet of sign, which includes thirty-two square feet of electronic reader board embedded in that eighty-square-foot area.
And the difference between six and six A is?
It's just structural. Substantively, it's intends to accomplish the same thing.
Melissa?
So six A, if enacted, would permit the church to install the diagram sign that we've seen with the Grace, gograce.com stuff, okay.
Which one, six or six A?
Six A. So I would move to amend DM- So, I would, uh, move to amend DMMC eighteen dot four-two dot two-nine-oh subsection four to add the subsections A through C to read as detailed in our amendments. Six A.
Six A.
Six A.
Okay, it does not have all those subs underneath it, so that's good.
Oh.
To know. Okay. So, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Netting. Um. Okay, discussion? Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to support this. I'm going to support this for a couple of reasons. Number one, I see that there's enough votes to support it, so I can get away with what I'm about to do, which is probably the first time in my political career I've ever done it, but it's a protest vote. And the reason I'm protesting this is, two weeks ago, uh, someone got up, uh, from Grace Lutheran, it was not Mr. Casey spoke earlier, and stated that, uh, they wanted to use this larger reader board, uh, as a notification to let people know whenever the city punished people.
Excuse me, Bob, just a second. Uh, is there a motion to extend the council meeting to ten-thirty?
No, but I'll extend, I'll give a motion to extend the council meeting to ten-fifteen.
Second.
We need to get through this.
Well, it's going to take as long as it takes.
Well, you may do it without some of your councilmembers after ten-fifteen.
Okay.
There's a, there's a motion to second, so.
Yep. All those in favor extending the meeting until ten-fifteen, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, back on. Uh, again, a statement was made that this was going to be used in order to punish people for, uh, the city going after them for any code violations that were being done. I questioned that at the end of that statement and said, did I just hear you make the term punishing people? And the person that made the statement denied that. So I went to the online council meeting, it's recorded, and in approximately one hour thirty-six minutes and fifty-four seconds, there it was, and that was indeed what the person had said. Now, I took that kind of personal, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, to say it and then turn around and deny it didn't work very well with me. But more importantly, uh, I'm in very, I'm a big supporter of our code enforcement officer, and I think this was a real slap in the face to that individual who has a very, very tough job to do, and doesn't have to be out there worrying that someone's going to be posting up something up there because they want to punish people for what action she took. So, this is a protest vote, because I know it probably wouldn't pass legal muster, but that's the reason I'm doing it, so my vote would be no.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six-one. All right. Motion number eight, uh, which is basically language on page three thirty-six of the packet. Comes from up there, involves that portion of the snatching. Um. Is there a motion for the amendment?
Um, I move to amend Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen forty-two three-ten one A, I through double I and triple I, um, to change that, um, building sites with up to two-hundred feet of footage, um, can have two vehicular accesses. And, um, this is just to, um, oh, and if the building site is on two arterials, it could also have, um, an additional freestanding sign. Um, if a business, um, needs that, thinks they need that many entrances, that's quite a few feet apart. And we do have some places where there's like Pack Highway and Two-Sixteenth, or Pack Highway and Kent Des Moines Road, or places where, um, they might want to have more than one, uh, freestanding sign.
Other com- uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Scott. Okay. Discussion? I'm trying to understand what the value is of having an additional sign on a property, um, that's within two-hundred feet of each other. And, and by the way, I don't think your amendment actually provides for two access points. Um, this is just in the sign, the sign code. Um.
Oh.
Uh, the, um, so, I'm, I'm trying to understand, um, I'm trying to understand what the value is of having two, two signs on a property, especially when we've gone, in, really in regards to Pacific Ridge, we've gone out of our way to raise building heights, to provide value to the properties that are up there. And we're talking about providing additional visual clutter. You know, obviously, I, I agree that signs are important in terms of people being able to find their businesses and everything, but having multiple signs, I'm trying to understand the value in that. Carmen?
I think the minimums of having at least two-hundred feet of frontage and more than one vehicular access, uh, if you're coming from the south, you're probably going to notice the sign that you come to first, but if you're coming from the north, you may need to see a sign, you know, you can only slow down to get in the right lane to make a turn at certain places on ninety-nine. And if, if signs are two-hundred or more feet apart, it seems to me that having one at each end of the property or at each entrance to the property is going to assist the people that are coming from whichever direction that sign is closest to.
Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion fails three to four. Okay, motion number nine?
Okay. I move that, um, amend the Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen forty-two three-ten one B, uh, to change the freestanding sign size from eighty square feet to one-hundred square feet. And, oh, okay. Stop there for now, okay. Um, when I was first looking at this, I said two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, just to make a number that was bigger because we, the staff hadn't given us any information on what size the signs were. And then, um, when we had our first hearing, they said that the Fred Meyer sign, the new one, is a hundred square feet. Um, and at that point, I believe they said that that was all the state highway code would allow. Um, so, um, could make it bigger, but this would at least make us the same as Kent, uh, with the sizes that we allow, so. It's still be my proposal to move it from eighty to one-hundred square feet.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes four to three. Motion number ten?
Uh, let's see. I move to amend Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen forty-two three-ten one C, uh, to change the height allowed from fifteen to twenty feet. Um. There's a second. Yes, this would, um, also get us in line with the Kent signs and, um, the, uh, one that was shown to be a non-conforming side would be a conforming side, but it would also get us the same as, um, as Kent. And if we are going to have large businesses up on Pacific Highway where the cars are moving quickly and the highway is wide, I think they're going to need some height in order for people to see it before they get there.
What about the additional language that is added on, tacked on to the end there?
This is on the handout that we distributed, this was to address the concern about the sloping, uh.
Oh, uh, ignore that one.
Oh, but this would address Bjornarby's concern about his property being below grade and allow him to have a taller sign?
This would allow.
What?
We're.
Can we get, uh, city manager's input, please?
Verification on the edit?
Yeah, I think I might, I'm reading this wrong.
Oh, there's additional language apparently in the, whether the scan that was handed out.
And this language was added, uh, by, by staff at the, to try to accomplish what councilmember Burridge requested on those sloping sites.
It says, the city manager is off, yeah. City manager is authorized to formally waive the maximum sign height when signs must be set back from the arterial because of slope site conditions, provided the city manager determines that the intent of this section is otherwise met. So, when you look at Mr. Bjornarby's, uh, pole sign, it's, sits on the ground of his parking lot, and it pokes up over the grade of Highway ninety-nine, what, about ten feet or so? So, so this would allow me to say, I'm going to let it be twenty feet above the grade of Pack Highway, Right. which meets the intent of the code, but if you measured it the way we're supposed to measure, it might actually be thirty feet tall, or thirty-five, series. Yeah.
That's my motion, sorry. Second.
Okay.
I, I don't know of any other, um, situation like that on the highway, is there?
I don't know whether the Stafford site is one of those steep slope.
There, there are a few other properties on the west side, either, that might have this as an issue? Uh, the reason I ask that, I mean, I'd, I'd love to be doing it just for BJ, you know? Yeah, I, I, he makes a very legitimate, uh, brings about a very legitimate concern here, one that we probably would never think of, because there are just not that many, other than his situation. So it's kind of geared a little bit towards, uh, BJ's. So I, I can be supportive of that.
All, any other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, amendment number eleven. Is page three thirty-six, um, basically eighteen forty-two ten one sub E.
See that? The off-premise sign one pass?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, and then this is just to conform with that and because it was mentioned several places in the code?
Let's just confirm that.
Because it's already, we already changed it.
Okay.
So you just put it in line with the rest of the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously.
Twelve?
Motion twelve?
Right, um, I move that Des Moines Municipal Code eighteen forty-two three-ten to be amended to read, um, two square feet per linear foot for the, um, sign area permitted, up to a total of two-hundred square feet, or no more than ten percent of the front wall size, whichever is larger.
If it was larger.
And the, hm? Is that the right one? Oh, I don't know, there's two sets.
Okay, this is, this is on page three thirty-seven, um, up at the top. A. And then there's the A.
Because I look at this, that one's, is that the same? It's the same. And this would, um, actually like, make it the same as the Marina District?
Mm-hmm.
The Marina District was changed apparently a couple of years ago, and actually, I would think on the highway, you would allow larger signs than in town, and it's, right now, it's just the opposite. The larger signs are allowed in the Marina District. Um, and I came up with the ten percent, uh, front wall size, which is what Fred Meyer is, which is what they allow in Kent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I do want to point out that if you go to the next page, three thirty-eight, go to, uh, section six, each single business property is permitted a total sign area not to exceed two square feet per linear foot of street frontage up to a maximum of two-hundred square feet. That is the Marina District, um, formula, which this is supposed to be matching. And by saying that, um, two square feet per linear foot of street frontage up to a maximum of two-hundred feet or whichever is greater, when you look at the ten percent, would allow the signs in all, all other parts of town to be just a little bit bigger.
Not in the Marina District, though.
Well, that's true, the Marina District would be limited to what is on the page I just read from.
Which I think is fine with it being on a highway.
So, so essentially up in Pack Highway. Dave, I move to extend five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, uh, extending the meeting five minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ten-twenty. Um, any discussion on this? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes five to two?
Mayor Kaplan?
Yes.
Um, number thirteen was to conform the Marina District with the other one, but the other one didn't pass, so never mind.
You lost, which, which one was it tied back to, Jeanette?
Number thirteen, um, was to make it so you could have more signs, um, with this.
Oh, with number eight.
Street frontage.
Right.
Yeah, and that failed.
Okay. Very good.
Your, your, um, if I could just, we, we found the illumination, the opaque illumination thing, it is explicitly in the code.
You can remove it.
In the sign code?
Yes.
Which, which page?
Uh, we're looking at, at, um, page three, um, three thirty-seven.
Opague field or background, so only the individuals are illuminated.
Little, more, halfway down the page.
I move to strike section eighteen dot four-two dot three-ten subsection three, which reads, internally illuminated signs shall be constructed using individual letters, characters, or sign cabinets with an opaque field or background, so that only the individual letters and characters are illuminated.
Second.
So, motion made by Councilmember Luster, seconded by Mayor Protimpeena. This would eliminate the standards related to the signs entirely.
Just with respect to block lettering and opaque background. Could still have other design guidelines and other.
And, and my thought is that design of signs has probably developed in certain way that this may even be an antiquated standard based on some signs that are available now.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Hey. We have officially amendments.
And Jeanette, you officially won the Scott.
All those in favor. We're on final passage now, all those in favor of draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero-zero, zero-one-one as amended, amending DMMC eighteen point four-two sign code, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, hold on a second, here, draft ordinance number thirteen dash zero-one-one. Ordinance of the City of Des Moines, Washington, relating to the City of Des Moines Sign Code, codified as chapter eighteen point four-two DMMC, amending chapter eighteen point zero-eight DMMC. To clarify, public reader board signs are allowed as off-premise signs to help promote economic development and to address community concerns. With that, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Motion made by Councilmember Scheckler, seconded by Mayor Protimpeena, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Our next council meeting will be on Thursday, September fifth. We are adjourned.